Due to issues with traffic this morning, we're just going to adjourn the meeting for another 10 minutes to let members arrive. Thank you. (pause) Due to issues with traffic this morning, we're just going to adjourn the meeting for another 10 minutes to let members arrive. Due to issues with traffic this morning, we're just going to adjourn the meeting for another 10 minutes to let members arrive. And welcome to today's meeting of the Suffolk County Council Development and Regulation Committee. I am councillor Jenny Teresa and I will be chairing today's proceedings. This meeting is being broadcast live and will also be available to watch subsequently on the council's website. Members of the public and press may record or broadcast the meeting when not lawfully excluded, provided they show due respect to others in attendance in accordance with Please ensure that electronic devices are turned off or set to silent and speak clearly into the microphones, avoiding any obstructions to maintain sound quality. We are not expecting a fire drill today. In the event of an alarm, please follow the fire exit signs at the rear of the chamber. Evacuation instructions can also be found on page three of the agenda. Agenda item one, apologies for abstinence and substitutions. Do we have any, please, Rebecca?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I've received apologies from councillor Haika Sowa and councillor Lance Stanbury and there
Agenda item two, declarations of interest and dispensation. Members, do you have anything to declare? I see no hands raised, thank you. Agenda item three is the minutes of the previous meeting. To approve as a correct record, the minutes of the meeting held on the 22nd of July 2025. Are members happy to agree the minutes? Agenda item four is the SCC-0023-25B, Brantham Hall Farm, Brantham, Suffolk. This planning application seeks approval for the construction of an agricultural irrigation reservoir with incidental extraction of mineral, partly retrospective, at Brantham Hall Farm, Brantham, Suffolk, CO11, 1pt. Before we proceed, I'd like to extend a warm welcome to the following officers who are present to assist with any points of clarification. James Cotten, Head of Planning; Andy Rutter, Development Manager; Billy Manning, Career Grade Planner; and Jonathan Buckington, the council's lawyer. I will now hand over to Billy to introduce the report and table paper.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. So this is agenda item four, which is for an agricultural reservoir with mineral extraction at Brantham Hall Farm, Brantham, Suffolk. I would just like to make members aware that there are two amendments to the committee report. This should be in front of the on-tabled paper, agenda item four. There have been two amendments to the committee report, and this was since it was published. The first is an amendment to paragraph 31. Since the report was published, the local councillor, Simon Harley, has provided a response. To summarise this, he has no objection to the application and agrees that it should be approved subject to the conditions in appendix A. And then the second amendment is to appendix A, which is an additional condition, so this will be condition six, and this is in relation to tree protection measures. There are no further amendments from these two. As already stated, this is a, this application is for an agricultural irrigation reservoir with mineral extraction. This is a retrospective application, as the development has already started to take place. Approximately 35,000 tonnes of sand and gravel has been exported off the site. Yep. Okay, sorry, just continuing on. This, there was approximately 35,000 tonnes of sand and gravel that has been exported off the site. As this is a retrospective application, this has already occurred, and the applicant has confirmed that no further material will be exported off the site as part of this development. The footprint of the reservoir, including the embankments, is approximately 1.13 hectares and will have a capacity of approximately 27,000 metres squared of water. Just to show where the location of the site is, the red line boundary connects to the, sort of towards the north-west of the plan. This is the A137, the main road that goes from Colchester and Manning Tree towards Ipswich. The site itself is approximately 10 kilometres south of Ipswich, located just east of the town of Brantham. There is a long access track, this is not a new access track and it is currently used by, or previously used by Brantham Hall Farm as a farmer's access. You can see more in the middle of the plan where the blue line and the red lines cross over. This is the railway line that cuts across the access track, and then the access to the site continues to go through the farmyard, and then the larger red line area, sort of the middle towards the south of the plan, is where the agricultural reservoir itself is located. This is just the aerial plan of the site, again showing the red line boundary, and this time you can sort of see the lighter colours towards the south of the plan where the red line boundary goes around, and this is where the agricultural reservoir is located. You can see the works that have already taken place. Now I'm just going to go through some photos around the site, so this part of Suffolk, there's a number of public rights away, particularly footpaths, that go around the site. Apart from the, I'll go back through the plan, there is one public right away that follows the railway line and that crosses over the site access. No other public rights away cut through into the site, so the reservoir itself, there are no public rights away that cut through this. The closest is approximately 150 metres south of the site along the River Stour. So the first photo is taken from a north-westly direction along a public rights away, and again the first photo shows the approximate location of the reservoir, and the second one is just an edited photo to show what the reservoir will look like once it's been built. I'll go through, there's about five photos, or five slides of photos to run through, but due to the topography and existing vegetation, the, you know, the reservoir does blend very well into the, to the landscape. So this photo is taken from south, south of the site, approximately 150 metres away, this is sort of the closest point the public rights away gets to the site. Again, the market makes out that where the location of the proposed reservoir is, and in this case, the only change noticeable is there would be the embankment that has changed the topography of the land slightly. Again, this photo is taken from the south-east of the site along the same public rights away, and again, very minor changes, just slight changes into the topography, again from the embankment. This time, this photo is taken in Essex, just outside of Mistley, which is approximately one and a half kilometres away from the site, so that is the River Stour immediately in front on the photo, and then the reservoir again is just north of that, and again, the only visible change would be from the embankment of the reservoir. And then these are the final two photos, these are just taken from east of the site and north-east of the site. In this case, because of the topography, the reservoir, there'd be a very minor change again from any embankment part of the reservoir. Just going through the planning history of the site, previously, Beavie District Council granted a prior approval application in 2020 for the agricultural reservoir, however, since that was granted, mineral was, or sand and gravel was exported off the site, and that goes against the conditions of the prior approval. This was picked up by Suffolk County Council as Minerals Planning Authority, and in 2023 served an enforcement notice as the mineral had been exported off the site. This resulted in submission of an application for the site, and prior to the submission of the application, Suffolk County Council in 2024 issued an EIA screening opinion confirming the development was an EIA development, and as part of the planning application, an environmental statement has been submitted. Just going through the key considerations of the site, there are no outstanding objections from either statutory, consular, or third parties. Just to make members aware, and I've got another map to show in a minute, the site is located within the Suffolk and Essex coast and east national landscape, and it's approximately 160 metres north of the River Stour, and that is both an SBA and a ground-site. The, just showing members, this is the location of the national landscapes within South Suffolk, so to the west of this map, the green area is the Dead and Vale AOMB, and then the pink and purple shades are the Essex and Suffolk coast and east, now renamed national landscape, and the darker areas, the extension areas, but this is all part of the national landscape now. So towards the south middle of the map, this is the approximate location of the farm and where the reservoir has been built, again completely within the national landscape. So the recommendation to committee is that the application is approved in accordance with the conditions set out in appendix A, and just to make members aware, there is the additional condition, condition six, which is for tree protection measures. Thank you.
Thank you, Billy. Member, do you have any points of clarification or confirmation of facts? The public participation session, we have received no request to speak in the public participation session, and so I'll just ask members again if they have any questions for officers before I open debate. Councillor Stringer?
Just got a question about the wildflower seed planting. It says there's going to be seeds planted, but the condition says that any planting removed, dying, or seriously damaged, it doesn't seem to be, that's not how you manage wildflower meadows? It's all about how you cut and the cutting regime. So is the condition going to be adequate for the maintenance of a wildflower seeded meadow?
Yes, so there's also one of the other conditions for the landscape management plan, and within that, obviously that condition has to be discharged, and it's one of the things that our landscape officer does always pick up, so that would be, the details specifically for the wildflower would be picked up in that, how that's maintained, and then once that's been discharged, that can then be enforced if that wasn't going to happen.
Thank you, that's very helpful.
Are there any further points of clarification for members? I will now open the debate. Councillor Stringer?
I bet, why is everyone so bashful? Yeah, it is a bit worrying that, obviously, this is a retrospective application because there wasn't... (end of transcript)
front on the photo and then the reservoir again is just north of that and again, the only visible change would be from the embankment of the reservoir. And then these are the final two photos, these are just taken from east of the site and north-east of the site, in this case because of the topography, the reservoir, there'd be a very minor change again from any embankment part of the reservoir. Just going through the planning history of the site, previously Beavie District Council granted a prior approval application in twenty twenty for the agricultural reservoir, however since that was granted, mineral was, or sand and gravel was exported off the site and that goes against the conditions of the prior approval. This was picked up by Suffolk County Council as minerals planning authority and in twenty twenty-three served an enforcement notice as the mineral had been exported off the site. This resulted in submission of an application for the site and prior to the submission of the application, Suffolk County Council in twenty twenty-four issued a EIA screening opinion confirming the development was an EIA development and as part of the planning application, an environmental statement has been submitted. Just going through the key considerations of the site, there are no outstanding objections from either statutory, consulter or third parties. Just to make members aware, and I've got another map to show in a minute, the site is located within the Suffolk and Essex coast and east national landscape and it's approximately a hundred and sixty metres north of the river Stour and that is both an SBA and a ground site. The, just showing members, this is the locations of the national landscapes within South Suffolk, so to the west of this map, the green area is the Dedden Vale A O M B and then the pink and purple shades are the Essex and Suffolk coast and heath, now renamed national landscape and the darker area, the extension areas, but this is all part of the national landscape now. So it's towards the south, middle of the map, this is the approximate location of the farm and where the reservoir has been built, again, completely within the national landscape. So the recommendation to committee is that the application is approved in accordance with the conditions set out in appendix A and just to make members aware, there is the additional condition, condition six, which is for tree protection measures. Thank you.
Thank you Billy. Member, do you have any points of clarification or confirmation of facts? The public participation session, we have received no request to speak in the public participation session and so I'll just ask members again if they have any questions for officers before I open debate. Councillor Stringer?
Just got a question about the wildflower seed planting. It says there's going to be seeds planted, but the condition says that any planting removed, dying or seriously damaged, it, there doesn't seem to be, that that's not how you manage wildflower meadows, it's all about how you cut and the cutting regime. So is there, is the condition going to be adequate for the maintenance of a wildflower seeded meadow?
Yes, so there's also one of the other conditions for the landscape management plan and within that, obviously that condition has to be discharged and it's one of the things that our landscape officer does always pick up, so that would be, the detail specifically for the wildflower would be picked up in that, how that's maintained and then once that's been discharged, that can then be enforced if that wasn't going to happen.
Thank you, that's very helpful.
Are there any further points of clarification for members? I will now open the debate. Councillor Stringer?
I bet, why is everyone so bashful? Yeah, it is a bit worrying that obviously this is a retrospective application because there wasn't an ability to condition traffic movements that have already happened, basically. But at least it has been picked up and it's now being regularised, the report is, I think, self-explanatory and well put together. I don't have a sign, with the clarification about the wildflower meadow and the planting, I don't have any problems with moving approval on it, chairman.
Do I have a second, councillor Mason?
Yes, Chair, happy to second.
Would any other members like to enter debate? Councillor Bird?
Well, not directly relevant, but other than to say probably we're going to have to see a great deal more of these sort of reservoirs with infrequent rain and climate change, we're probably going to see a lot more coming down the line.
Are there any further members that would like to enter debate? No, so we have on the table the officer's recommendation that planning permission be granted subject to the conditions set out in appendix A and the table paper. All those in favour? That's unanimous, the item is approved. That concludes today's Development and Regulation Committee meeting. Thank you all for your attendance and contributions. Before you leave, please note that since the agenda was published, an additional meeting has been scheduled. The next meeting of the Development and Regulation Committee will now take place at ten AM on Monday the twenty-second of September twenty twenty-five and we do also have officers staying after this meeting today that we can have a discussion. Thank you. This meeting is now closed.